Okay, good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the Union County Planning Board meeting, February 4th, 2020, starting about 7:05. Before we get started, we have a little business we have to take care of, and we have a new member, Jonathan Thomas, and we need to get him sworn in, Lee.
Good. Thank you.
Welcome, Jonathan. First item on our agenda is to establish our voting members. We have one member absent, and I'm going to ask Chris, is it okay with you? So do we have a motion for Christopher to come?
Yes.
Okay. Voting member, we have a second?
I'll second.
Russell, thank you. So, you're in.
I'm in.
Good. Okay. Second item is to review the agenda for additions, deletions. Does anybody know of any changes?
Mr. Chairman.
That needs to be added or anything to be deleted from.
Mr. Chairman, item number seven, the applicant has requested that that be delayed until the March agenda.
So delay number seven.
Yes, sir.
Mark that off. Okay. So do we have a motion to accept the amendment to the agenda with number seven coming off?
So may.
Thank you. Russell, do we have a second? Louis, thank you. Okay. So we'll follow the agenda as, with that change that's made. You have in front of you also that you received the November 5th, 2019 minutes. We ask for, you look at those if you hadn't had a chance to look at them for tonight, and review them, and we ask for a recommendation, either approve or disapprove when you're ready.
I make a motion we approve the November 5th, 2019.
Motion's been made by Russell to approve. Do we have a second? Louis, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, getting on to the...
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, who made that motion in second? Me.
Louis?
You made the motion.
I made it.
Louis was second. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Orchard Creek CZ 2019-010. But before we call any, anybody from the planning board or planning department up, there may be some of you here tonight that may want to say something either for or against. So I hope you've signed up outside on the table. Number one. Number two, we would ask that when you address the board and address the audience as well, that we do this in a civil manner, no yelling, screaming, ranting, raving. We don't get paid for that, and we will do the best we can to make the right decisions based on what we're charged with, with the comprehensive plan, et cetera, and what comes forth in the comments in the presentation. So if there is anyone that gets out of alignment, I will ask them to please leave. And I hate to have to say this, but we've, we have to strengthen the way we have input from the audience. So with that, Lee, are you going to be speaking tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's up to you.
As I walked in, there was no paper out there. There was a man or a woman walked in with me.
Here, here they are.
Oh, you got them?
Yeah, they got them. Thank you.
Sorry, thanks.
For calling that to our attention. Okay. Lee?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, as you stated, this is conditional rezoning. Our working title is, was CZ 2019-010. The working title for this is Orchard Creek. As you can see, this is the site plan. I apologize for the, I forgot to change the title at the top. That should say Orchard Creek instead of Dixon Farms. The proposal is for a 296-unit, single-family neighborhood. This is off of Rocky River Road, just south of the new roundabout at Highway 75. So you can see, has frontage on Rocky River Road. Highway 75 is just to the north, and I've got another picture that kind of will zoom out in just a second where you can see that. And then this is Old Waxaw Monroe Road, so literally just south of that, that new traffic circle. Again, it's 296 homes. They are asking for an R6 conditional designation. You can see there's some common area around the neighborhood, has two access points off of Rocky River Road, and the density is about 2.6 dwelling units per acre. These are some photographs of, of the property. See, the photographs on the right are Rocky River Road looking north and south. So you can see it's kind of rural out there right now. And then the, the photographs on the left-hand side are photographs of the site. So currently, the property is, is made up of two pieces. The northern piece is a, is a farm. There used to be, I think, some chicken houses on that property that were torn down some years ago. And the property that's part of this petition to the south is an existing mobile home park. Again, you can see the two properties here. There's a northern property, there's a southern property. There are no municipalities that show up on this map. If you go a little bit further, kind of to the southwest down Waxaw Highway, you will hit the town limits of Mineral Springs. So Mineral Springs is not, not terribly far away. And just to give you some more perspective, a little bit south of this is the intersection of Rocky River and Doster Road. And if you're familiar with that area, that's where the Stone Bridge Golf Course and Stone Bridge Neighborhood are located. This map just kind of shows for the metro-lado model what the development status is on the property. It kind of gives a good indication of whether it's developed or underdeveloped. So based on the metro-lado model, because this is a, an active farm, it is undeveloped. These chicken houses here do not exist anymore, they're gone. This property, again, about half of it, maybe a third of it's being used as a mobile home park. The rest of it, kind of toward the back, is vacant. Our current zoning out there is RA 40, and you can see most of that area is zoned RA 40. There are some exceptions up around the intersection of Highway 75 and Rocky River. There's some commercial zoning, so you've got B4 pieces, and then you also have a light industrial piece that's a little bit further back toward Monroe from the intersection. There are a few wetlands on the property that were identified by our, our maps. These are existing ponds, and there was a wetland in the middle. I'm not sure that, that's actually there, but most of these areas were accommodated for in the common open space. There were no traffic counts in the immediate vicinity of this, of this project, but you can see Waxaw Highway in the future is planned to be a four-lane road with a paved shoulder. And then both Rocky River Road South and Old Waxaw Monroe Road, there are two lanes right now, but they're supposed to have, be upgraded to two lanes with a paved shoulder as part of the comprehensive transportation plan. Also, we got comments from the school system on this property. This is in the Parkwood Cluster. The school system basically said that Parkwood did not, at this time, have any major issues as far as enrollment. And we did have some comments from Union County Public Works, and I believe the, the applicant has a little bit further information on this. It is, water is available along Rocky River Road. Sewer, based on Public Works' comments, right now, they say that sewer is not accessible to the property. The applicant intends to serve this property based on the pump station that accommodates Stone Bridge, the Stone Bridge Development. We don't have a model back from Public Works that says whether that pump station can handle it or not. I believe the developer is in process of trying to work through that, so they can probably address any questions about capacity in that pump station. So I just wanted to pass, pass those comments on from Union County Public Works. And then, as far as the land use plan is concerned, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on on this map. The property's bisected by the mixed residential and the single-family residential categories. The mixed residential is anticipated to be a slightly higher density than the one unit per acre that's anticipated by the single-family. And it's also anticipated that the mixed residential category will have, potentially have a mix of different housing types such as townhomes, apartments, and it really depends on, on the area. Of course, the single-family is an approximate one unit per acre category. And then, the employment corridor is, is a corridor that's on top of, or really, it buffers Highway 75. So it's not intended to be a, an employment corridor along that entire buffer. It's really a, a way to say that Highway 75 is, is set up for future employment industrial-type uses, and then the site-specific plans that come in will have to evaluate where they are based on when, when they come in. So it's not saying that the entire corridor should be stripped out as, as commercial or industrial, it's just saying that it's conducive to industrial development along that corridor. As far as staff comments go, we've, we've had some significant conversations with, with the developers' engineer on this project. Overall, they have done most everything that we've asked. We, staff did convey to the engineer that we thought that the 2.6 units per acre was a little bit high for this area, and I think you saw that in my, in my staff report. But other than that, it is relatively consistent, I'll say, with, with the comprehensive plan because it does call for slightly higher densities. 2.6 might be a little bit high, in, in our opinion, but again, you guys will make the recommendation based on what you feel the comp plan says to the Board of County Commissioners. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Does the board have any questions for Lee at this time?
Oh, yes, yes, Lee, I have a question. Regarding that sewer and looking for a pump station, who would bear the burden of the cost on that, on hooking that up?
The developer would be required, so, so the first step in the process to look at that pump station is, the developer would need to pay Union County Public Works. The, Union County Public Works is an on-call engineer that performs the analysis on, on that pump station to see if it's adequate to handle the flow. So they call it modeling the, the system. So the developer would be responsible, number one, for paying to model that system before they could go any further with Public Works on this project. If it came back where the pump station and the system overall could handle this project, then they would, they could move forward with Public Works. Of course, that would also, they would have to go through the rezoning process and get it rezoned to do that.
And who, who would pay for the upgrading and the...
That would all be the developer's responsibility.
Oh, okay.
Patrick?
Can you go back to that map that you had up before?
The land use map?
Yeah. All those little streets, that's where there was a trailer park, you said?
Yes, there's a mobile home park, right there. I can pull up the GIS if you'd like to.
What happens to the trailer park?
It goes away.
Where do people go? They go away too?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Lee, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Why are we at 2.6 and not 2.4, 2.3 to get it more in balance and closer to the...
Sure. I will say that a lot of the comprehensive plan is sort of an interpretation. There are no, and I think, you know, we've, we've talked about this on a few occasions, there is no solid, hard and fast rule on, you know, what's the, what's the density for the mixed residential, what's the density for the single-family. The single-family does call out approximately one unit per acre across the entire single-family area. The mixed residential really doesn't talk about what that density should be. You know, going forward in a new comp plan that we're working on, we, we intend to do that. We kind of look at it in that it is bisected, so you've got, you know, a one unit per acre, you know, area which, which could slightly increase as you move toward these mixed residential categories. And you've also got the mixed residential category which should increase slightly as it moves towards some of the, some of the activity nodes that you've seen on, on past plans, such as the commercial centers and, and retail centers and rural centers. When, when staff, when we sat down as, as a, as a full staff and, and kind of looked at this, I think they were a little bit higher than 2.6. I think at one time this was 309 units, so it has come down a, a little bit. And again, this is just, just staff's opinion that based in this area, 2.6 is probably still a little too high. I can't tell you what that number should be. I know we've had some in the past that have been kind of set up like this, that have been more around the 2.2 to 2.4, like you were talking about.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Charlie?
Did you say Waxaw Highway was going to be four-laned in the future?
Yes.
When?
A long way off.
Okay.
It's not funded.
2075.
So it's, it's not a funded project, so...
Okay.
I can't give you a...
And we don't have a count, a traffic count on Rocky River?
No, sir, but I believe the applicant's did a TIA, so they, they, they did traffic counts for that TIA, so they can probably address that. And those traffic counts will be very recent.
And so Rocky River feeds south to a traffic circle?
Rocky, the traffic circle, let me actually pull that up, because I've, I've got a, a neat little picture here. It's, it's not, it's so, it's too recent for it to even show up on our, our 2019 aerials on GIS. So, this is 75, right here. So 75 kind of moves from right to left. The development site would be a little bit south of this. This would be Rocky River, and this is Waxaw Monroe. So the development site's a little bit further south...
Okay.
...off of this site. But there's the railroad, there's Highway 75.
Okay. So it's actually a traffic circle north from your proposed site?
Yes.
So, just to clarify, we're asking to approve a conditional rezoning before we know whether or not sewer capacity is available? And then, once we do know that, that it's positive, it has to come back here for another approval?
No, sir. So what, what you're seeing tonight is the applicant's option, if they want to move forward, to come to the planning board. We, we did kind of have a conversation with the applicant about the Public Works comments. They wanted to go ahead and come to the planning board tonight. If you choose whatever recommendation you make tonight, if you, if you recommend to approve or you recommend to deny, that's what will go to, to the Union County Board of Commissioners. You know, you could ask that they get that information and come back. Once, once this is heard by the board, you have 45 days to, to make a decision. So theoretically, you could say you want to hear, you, you want it to come back, or you could just make a recommendation without it. If you choose to delay it, let's say you ask the, ask them to provide this information at a, you know, say a March meeting. Really, at them, at that point, it becomes the developer's choice. They could, they could come back, or they could just skip the March meeting and go to April Planning Board without a recommendation of the planning board.
You mean, go to the April BOC?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did I, that, that's what I meant to say. Yes, sir.
Charlie, I appreciate your comments, because I, I didn't, not Charlie, but Robert, I had that same thing in the back of my mind.
And, and again, I, I want, I want you to understand, I think the applicant may have a little bit more information about that. What I've gotten from Public Works is, is what I've told you.
Okay. Any more questions for Lee then? Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Would the applicant, applicant like to come forward to speak, please? If you'd state your name, your address, please.
Good evening. While I'm pulling this up, my name is Sarah Shirley. I'm with American Engineering, 8008 Corporate Center Drive, Suite 110 in Charlotte, North Carolina. And I am here on behalf of the developer, Mr. DA Davis, and the builder, Mr. Bob Bennett. And I... Lee, it's not popping up. Sorry.
There you go.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. Well, good evening. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Let me go ahead and get this thing started for you. Orchard Creek is planned as a family-oriented, single-family detached neighborhood. It will offer tree-lined streets, sidewalks, amenities such as a pool and clubhouse and walking trails. The images I have shown tonight are example amenities and views of similar neighborhoods developed by the builder. The homes are proposed to be priced, subject to market availability, $275,000 to $450,000 with an average square foot of 2, of 2,500. We are proposing a mix of one-and-a-half-story, two-story homes. Existing open spaces such as the ponds would be incorporated into the amenities packages, providing a unique natural opportunity for open space preservation. We're proposing a vegetated buffer around the perimeter of the property for both our residents' privacy and the privacy of the adjacent neighbors. We've taken feedback received both from the county and the neighbors into incorporation of the plan, and the plan you see tonight has included those comments. We have proposed the following changes, as you'll see on the PowerPoint presentation. We removed access to Old Waxaw Monroe Road. We originally had an emergency access plan there, but after speaking with the fire marshal, we decided to remove it. Now, I know this has gone back and forth as to the desirability of it. The neighbors also expressed a disinterest in having an access adjacent to their property on Old Waxaw Monroe Road, so we've chosen to remove it, but again, we can talk through that if that's a desire to have it. We have shown all the identified environmental features, so you'll see what we're showing as wetlands on the property are actually slightly different from what was previously shown on GS, GIS. These have all been field identified by a environmental specialist. We've removed 50-foot wide lots in order to accommodate 10-foot side yards, so all of the lots that are shown currently are 60-foot wide lots with 10-foot side yards. We've actually then, by doing that, reduced the overall density from 309 homes to 296, as Lee was talking about. The public sewer extension, this is something that we've been working extensively with Public Works for. There is a utility sketch plan process, and we've submitted for that. We have laboriously bugged Crystal, probably much to her sugar grin over the last couple weeks, to get comments back, and she graciously provided those to us yesterday. And the comments are basically just, we would like some more information so that we can send this out for modeling. We've had conversations with her in the past and with the department. There are no known capacity issues in the area, and it's understood that developer, as, as proposed in the Union County Master Water and Sewer Master Plan, developer would incur any costs that would be involved with extension of the public sewer system. The benefit of extending the public sewer system is that anybody along the path could also have the opportunity to connect to the system. We have also provided a traffic impact analysis, and that's been completed for the site, and all of the recommended improvements from that TIA, we are agreeing to commit to. So, we have a left-turn lane that would be proposed into our, both of our entrances, and that's basically what the recommendations were. The traffic counts that exist along South Rocky River Road just barely meet the threshold for NCDOT traffic counting. 4,000 vehicle trips per day is the, is the litmus test for when a road deserves to be looked at a second time and for improvements. Old Waxaw Monroe Road, for instance, doesn't even register on NCDOT's website, so. Other things that we have done for the site essentially, and I did want to go back to the sewer also, basically just the extension of it would, would provide the county with much more benefits. By providing homes here with the potential children and families, the currently under-capacity schools can stand to recoup the approximately $2 million that are currently being left on the table with no additional infrastructure needed to do so. And by providing homes here, Union County signals it's open for business as rooftops support retail, so it would help to support the employment corridor that's based in this area. By offering a neighborhood in this location with Monroe just to the east and Waxaw to the west, this neighborhood would provide opportunity for families to buy into Union County's second rated, second-rated, highest-rated school system in the state without having to face Western Union County's congestion or overcrowded schools. We can provide the density of 2.6 units to the acre here because both the schools can support it, the roads can support it, and it opens opportunities for people to get into the county. So with that being said, we are providing what we consider a balanced growth opportunity for the county, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Louis?
Yes, when, when you had the, the 50-foot lots, how big was the side yard then?
Five feet.
Five feet.
And we had, we had a couple conversations with the fire marshal who did not like that, so we increased the, we wanted to be respectful of...
55 to 70, okay.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
So all these are front load, and do you have a, a picture of what one of the narrower lots would look like with the dwelling on them from a top view?
We don't have, we only have one size lot, so it would be a 40-foot wide pad, building pad, with 10-foot side yards in the, on the sides. So 20 feet basically between buildings.
Okay. What kind of an apron, driveway apron do you have in front of the dwellings?
We generally provide concrete driveways, and they're usually, it's a two-car garage, so it's 18 to 20 feet wide, and we would space them 25 feet behind the right-of-way. What we like to do is make sure that the driveway is exclusive of the sidewalk, for instance, so that we're not parking cars over top of the sidewalk. I currently live in a neighborhood, I'm very aware of being able to walk along my sidewalks.
Can you address the emergency vehicle access and egress?
Yes, sir. I've spoken with the fire marshal about access. We have one of two options. We could either provide a street, a basic street cross-section that would restrict any orange street parking, or we could widen that street cross-section in order to provide parking while still providing a clear drive path for cars going both ways. So whichever one we chose, with the restricted orange street parking that would be incorporated into our HOA documents, we chose to go the second route, we would make sure all of our street... we chose to go the second route, we would make sure all of our streets met that requirement to keep a clear path.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
I'm not sure I understood what you just said.
Okay. So a basic street cross-section is twenty-four feet wide, from edge of pavement to edge of pavement. So two twelve-foot travel lanes. If you try to park cars on that, you start having the wind around. So basically, what we would do is increase, usually it's a factor of eight to nine feet to accommodate cars parked on both sides. And whichever one we decided, we would either have signs that were posted that said, "No on-street parking enforced by H O A, enforced by police," or we would accommodate that wider profile essentially to allow for a clear travel path. So instead, so it'd be a twelve-foot, twelve-foot, nine and nine for making for a wider street.
So we don't know which of these streets would be twenty-four feet wide, and which of these streets would be wider than twenty-four?
We would apply it across the board. So if we chose to restrict on-street parking, we would stick with one cross-section. If we chose to allow parking on the streets, we would make all the streets wider. So right now, we have a sixty-foot right-of-way shown on all of the streets. And we would, that would be able to accommodate on-street parking within the right-of-way.
Throughout the entire?
Yes, sir. And we would, we would update that too and make sure it worked at time of site plans in the middle.
Wouldn't that cut into your apron for the driveways, though?
No, what we would do is basically push everything out from there. So at time of conceptual rezoning and plan approval, we get the idea approved, but if we needed to decrease density or change the design to accommodate a comment such as that, we would basically reduce density. We'd push everything back. So what we commit to now, we're stuck with in the future. So if we say we're providing a twenty-five-foot front yard, if we increase the right-of-way, we push that twenty-five-foot back also. So we would not be reducing driveway aprons.
So you'd lose backyards then?
No, we would increase the lot to stay the same size also, so everything would just spread out a little bit more. So we'd keep our lots at a hundred and thirty-five feet deep as currently shown.
You mentioned the T I A, said it's been reviewed and comments were addressed. Were they based on the third-party engineering firm that conducted the T I A or based on county engineering comments?
Both. So Bjorn Hansen has been involved with the whole process from the day, from day one. When the T I A gets submitted, it's submitted as a draft. Bjorn comments, and we incorporate those comments. N C D O T comments, we incorporate those comments. And then the final T I A is based on incorporation of both entities.
Going back, traffic as well, you talk about employment as adding to employment opportunities. I assume you're speaking to residents. I'm not aware of unsupported job growth within the county, so would it be a fair assumption that a number of these parties that would be living here would be commuting into Charlotte and utilizing roads that may be a little more well-traveled?
We generally see a mix. Basically, Monroe has opportunities. For example, my husband actually commutes from Fort Mill to Monroe every day in order to work at his job site. So we see this as an opportunity to meet that, that middle ground where people are commuting forty-five minutes to get from one location to the other. This would be an opportunity for people who work in Waxell, work in Monroe, work in Wengate in order to get to and from their jobs every day.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have two curious questions. Is there a central mailbox kiosk facility, number one? And number two, does Diamond shaped lease access to Crown and Atlantic Company? Up on top there?
Oh, yes, up here. Yes, this is a cell tower.
Okay.
Yeah, we have met the fall zone requirements for it. It's based on the height of the cell tower. So we'd make sure none of our lots are within that fall zone.
Okay.
And yes, we would have a central mail kiosk. Yes, sir.
Anyone else got any comments?
Question, looks like Route G, I guess it is. Is it, am I going blind, or is that just, that ends into a field?
This road here on the...
Yes.
It is a cul-de-sac?
Yes, when it goes the other way.
When it goes, oh...
You reach the end of your property, where does it go from there?
So whenever we plan out for developments, we like to acknowledge that there are other properties nearby that might come online. Connectivity is a very important step to include. That being said, if the stub is undesirable, we could take it out. It's a way for other properties to connect to a public road system if they came online and were developed. You're welcome.
And Louis, I will say that that is, if you were just developing a straight R A forty subdivision or R twenty, if it was just a by-right development, we generally require stub outs like that. They're generally not for through-traffic, but a lot of times you'll have people that are trying to get from one neighborhood to another because they've got friends that live there. Instead of having to get out and go around in a circle they can easily access through.
I'd be curious as to what the people think, we took those trailers that we have to move, we had put by the back door. It's gotta be like that.
Any other comments or questions for the applicant?
So if you widen the streets, you don't lose any density?
If we widen the streets, it would depend on what the cross-section would be. It'd be possible that we might, but we've built, what we like to do in our conceptual rezoning plans, at least from an engineering perspective, is we like to build in some flexibility that we can work within the confines. So we expect there to be a certain amount of change, but we understand that basically, this is the cap. This is the highest amount of homes that we'd be asking for. And if we needed to change the design, it would only go down from there.
Any other comments or questions?
It's been mentioned a couple of times, what's the intentions or plans with the displacement of the mobile home park there?
From what we understand, the current, the current residents on the site are renters. And so the lease would end as any other lease ends.
Any other comments or questions?
So the lease ends because the property was bought?
Correct.
Not that, I mean, if they have a two-year lease, or they have a year lease and they just moved in. And all of a sudden, the next month, the property's sold.
I know that there are laws governing how much notice you can give when you sell a rental property, for instance. So all legal ways of notifying the residents would be followed. Yes, sir.
Do you have anybody else from the applicant's side that would like to speak?
I think we're good, but we're here to answer any questions or address any comments from the neighbors.
If we have any, we'll call you back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
This time, we would like to call speakers that have signed up to come forward to the lectern there and give us your name and give us your address. And you will have three minutes to plead your case, for or against. And Mr. Harrison here will do the timing, and he will raise his hand when it's just about up. So we'd like to hold everything to three minutes of the comments. Be sure you make, issue your name and your address before we start the clock here. So, Mr. Bill McGirt, attorney, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a lot of new faces here for me. I served on this board at one time, but the only two names I remember are Everett's and Louis'. So a lot of good people have changed, and I'm glad to see you here.
We've got a chair here for you if you want to come up.
Well, I just got appointed to the Board of Adjustments, so I'm gonna spend my time there for a while. I'm a longtime, born and raised here. I'm probably a minority now, somebody born in Union Memorial Hospital and raised in Union County. That row back here is the McAtier family. I married into that family. Ms. Helen McAtier was the aunt to my first wife. And my first wife died in two thousand seventeen, and they're still my family. I still associate with them, and they still associate with me. I even drove the bus for their kids driving by this property for many years when I was at Parkwood. They still live in this area. If you look where the pond is, just to the north of the pond is Bill and Helen's house. Just to the right of the pond, down where the curve is for Rocky River Road is, shows up as William Charles, but he's Chuck McAtier to me, and his wife Amy, they're back here. They farmed this property for many years. I don't remember when there was anything there other than this farm and a softball field that was used for church softball for so many years. And their hope was that this property would still be farm property for many, many, many years. They sold the property, and now they're looking at having their back door coming in with houses, over two hundred and ninety-six homes now. And they have a lot of concerns about it. I wish we could go back to Union County when it was a farming community back in my day, but I know that we're going to be seeing more and more and more people wanting to move to it because it's a great county. Our concerns are that we're moving from R A forty, which was what I remember when I was on the board, that we had planned for this area because it fit in well. And we were trying to keep from having more of the mobile home parks in that area pop up. And so their concern is not that a new subdivision's going in. It's a subdivision that's coming in with two hundred and ninety-six homes in such a small area. I don't know how many of you travel Rocky River. I'm on it every day. Rocky River is a major traffic highway for people coming from South Carolina, especially in the Parkwood area, up off of two hundred because of the way that trucks are now coming around, having to come up M L K and be routed around. So you have a lot of trucks, you have a lot of families traveling the road on a daily basis, and we see that this is actually gonna cause a lot more traffic in the area. I can't speak to the school system. I know Parkwood's about like all the other schools. It's crowded. Will it have an impact on it? I'm sure it'll have some impact.
Time's up.
But I'll let you know that the McAtiers are concerned about it, and they would like for you not to allow this to go forward.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next up, Mr. Chuck. I can't make out your last name, sir. I apologize.
Yes, Chuck McAtier. I'm sixteen eighteen, South Rocky River Road. And Bill just showed you the area where my property is, is just south of that pond you see in the top, in the curve. And, you know, I got a lot of things to say, but Bill took most of them, so I hope there was left. And he hit on it, the traffic there. You know, we hear the metrics coming from the people that want this to go through. I've lived on that road for fifty-eight years. And I've seen what the traffic's done. If you put another six hundred cars on that twice a day, it's gonna be awful. It already is. Just less than a week ago, I was on my way home from work, and about to turn in, it was night. Car was tailgating me. So as I hit my turn signal to turn in, he was obviously ill because I was slow, kicked out to go around, this is at night, into oncoming traffic, three cars. If they hadn't hit the ditch, we'd have had a five-car head-on collision. If I try to get out of my driveway, it's Russian roulette whether I'm gonna get rear-ended or not right now. We're gonna add six hundred more cars twice a day. That makes sense. I mean, to me, and I'm gonna read this. This is nothing more than another developer trying to get rich at the expense of a longtime county resident taxpayer. I'm probably getting close to my three minutes, so I'll leave you with this. You heard about the chicken farm that was there? Had it for thirty-four years. Leased farmland out to Frank Howey Senior for longer than I can remember. And, and right around two thousand ten, we had to shut it, shut the chicken farm now. It was a hole. We had to get out of it. So at that point, the land had to be sold. And Frank Junior was farming the land, was farming the land until this comes up. So there was a gentleman's agreement. A gentleman's agreement that the land would remain as farmland. There's only one gentleman in that, in that meeting, is my dad. Yep, you don't have any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Mary Mahalas.
I'll say it for you.
Pardon?
Mihailides.
Okay, come on up. State your name in the microphone, your address.
Mary Mihailides.
Okay.
Wesley Oaks, four oh nine Springwood Drive, Waxell. I haven't been around that long in this area. I got here as fast as I could, but that was two thousand six. So I'm just, I don't represent anyone. I'm just another car on the road. And since I came, I can tell you the traffic has, I want to say more than tripled, but when you list the number of houses that are being built, it's not one car per house. These days, the mother has a car, the father has a car, the two kids have a car, so it's more like four cars per house. And if you're doing projects like this, and I came from Northern Virginia, which I've seen development and overdevelopment, you cannot continue on saying, "We're going to do it and build roads in the future," because they'll never get done. And when they do get done, it'll be too expensive. The taxes will go up. And the only person that's happy is the developer who's left. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your time. Next up is Fran Faraci.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Fran Faraci. I'm at seventeen nineteen South Rocky River Road, directly across the street from where the subdivision wants to be built. I'm glad Mr. Harrison brought up the fact about the trailer parks. I did speak with them on Saturday, and not one person in that trailer park, mobile home community, knew anything that was going on. So I don't know why they were considered adjoining properties. There is one particular home over there that is built pristine, beautiful. She felt she was gonna live there forever. They were under the impression, from their landlord, that he was gonna maybe pull the deal. Told them, "Don't worry about it. You're fine." So when I spoke to him on Saturday, because he was pulling up the lot rent, I said to him, "You know, you only have to give them a thirty-day notice, right?" He said, "Well, they're not gonna probably build until two thousand twenty-one." I said, "So you're gonna collect until December two thousand twenty, and then give them their thirty-day notice?" And every one of them can't go because they're over twenty years old, those trailers, and legally you cannot move them. They won't have the option to buy them out, because they'll tell them, "Okay, you can move your trailers," and they won't be able to. And that one particular one, I'm telling you, she probably has about two hundred thousand plus money into it because she was, had the underpinned, a brick crawl space put under it, thinking she was gonna be there forever. I mean, they didn't even, I mean, some of them, no clue what was going on. No clue whatsoever. And that's really wrong. And a lot of us here are upset about that. We are very upset about that. And it was kind of, I don't know if it was coincidence that I lived directly across the street, that I just got a violation that seventeen twenty-three also owned that house next door, South Rocky River Road, that the gentleman that lives in that house been renting from me for seven years, great man, hard-working, he's an over-the-road tractor-trailer driver. They're telling us now that he can't park his tractor-trailer on the property. And he's got two containers that he hooks onto his trailer, and we have a... And he's got two containers that he hooks onto his trailer, and we have a shed back there and we have it parked very neatly behind the shed. They told us build three walls and a roof. I don't care what the walls look like. I said, those walls could look worse than, um, the trailers. So he already had to sell one of them because he didn't want to get us in trouble, and I said, hold up. I put a thirty-day in, so, and I went down to the town. They told us there's nothing really written that you can't but, so we'll have to, we have to find out. So it's kind of a coincidence that they're trying to build a beautiful home across the street.
Time's up.
This is all starting to happen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That that dip in the road to the left of me is a death track, so to have this many homes, it's...
Next up is Greg Stevens.
Real quick, uh, just a question for Mr. Jensen. I know property owners have to be notified of potential rezonings. Do the renters, or do they receive notification?
No, sir. We don't have a, there's not a good way to know who those renters are. We have tax records that show who the property owners are, and that's, that's who we, that's who would have been notified at the rezoning period.
Okay, sir?
Okay, I was trying to pull up a, uh... Okay, as you see here in this photo, this is my home. I live at five twenty-two South Rocky River Road. The development that's being proposed is south of me. North of me is eighty-four, Highway eighty-four, going into Weddington and Independence Boulevard, or seventy-four. Okay? Um, I have two driveways. This is one here, this is one here. This is a no-passing zone. They pass on that road whether there's yellow lines or not. The speed limit is fifty-five miles an hour. I pulled a lady out of the ditch in front of my farm, um, two nights ago uh, because somebody tried to pass and she ran off the road into the field. Um, I have roughly twenty-eight cows on this property. Um, my concern is the amount of traffic that's gonna be going up and down this road. It is two lanes, no shoulder. And if for some reason I have good fencing, uh, barbed wire, electric, whatever I can do to keep the cows where they belong, but cows have a mind of their own, sorry to say. Um, but I have not had any get-out, but if they did, it, it might be dangerous. There's a lot of traffic going very fast. I had a guy, uh, I was turning into my driveway where you see the mailbox, and I was doing forty-five into fifty-five because I was fixing to turn. He slammed on his brakes in front of me and gave me the finger and, uh, and then sped off. And so my concern is the traffic going up and down. If you go north on this Rocky River Road, that's what this is here, um, you'll come to the intersection of eighty-four and Rocky River Road. At that corner is a Shell gas station and a light. There is no left turn, there is no right turn, there is nothing there, just two roads crossing. There are a ton of wrecks at that road. If this development goes in and there are, as you say, six hundred, maybe eight hundred-plus cars going up and down, because they're gonna have to go to Charlotte to go to work. I agree with that one hundred percent. If they go up and down that road, they're gonna go to eighty-four or seventy-four. They're not gonna go into Monroe down seventy-five because I don't agree that there's enough employment in Monroe to do this. I work in Charlotte myself. Three days of the week, I farm the rest. So my concern is the road and the speed limits that are imposed on that road uh, coming down through there and the traffic that is gonna be horrendous on that road.
Um... Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up is Rohit. Did I pronounce it right?
Sorry, Lee. Um, my name's Rohit Onamachi. I'm the planner for the Village of Marvin, and, uh, to be perfectly honest, I came here for the next, uh, item on the agenda, which got postponed. So I'll be here next month, but, uh, so as not to waste my trip, I paid attention to what everyone was saying. And, uh, although I'm not from the area and I can't speak, um, to the site, I do know a bit about conditional zonings. And one thing really, um, bothered me, which is that, um, in a conditional zoning, I'm sure you know, the site plan becomes the zoning, and the applicant has said there are, um, very many undecided factors of this project. And with all those undecided factors, I wouldn't have even let the applicant come to the planning board for a recommendation. Um, they, uh, they didn't have a TIA yet. They don't have their utility for the sewer, uh, plan yet. Uh, the street widths aren't decided. They don't know what they're gonna do with that stub. I think it would be inappropriate to make that recommendation today because you don't know what the, the final site should look like. That's all I'll say, and...
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, Julius Rosen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Julius Rosen, forty-seven twenty Old Waxahachie Monroe Road. Um, of course, I'm up here this evening. I'm opposed, uh, to development. Um, you know, kinda dead on. We got a lot of unknowns about this development. Uh, we talk about the roads. We talk about emergency access. Now, one thing, it's funny, we, we looked at the map there, there's, uh, we got this pretty green space that runs through that development. That's high-tension power lines, okay? Not even to mention that the fact that we have that cell phone tower sitting on that property. I have, uh, lived at my address for forty-two years. My grandparents bought it back in nineteen oh eight. Grandparents, friends, Bill McAtier's dad, their family. You know, I'm not ignorant to the fact that there's gonna be growth in this county. We live in a wonderful place. What I am opposed to is high-density cluster zoning like this, okay? Um, you know, when we take a look and we hear them, we talk about them paying for an extension, okay, and that's the extension over Stone Bridge. I, I looked and Water and Sewer already has an update coming for the pump station on seventy-five that's scheduled for two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three as in planning. That's a one-point-two million dollar project. I don't know what that does for us, but I got a feeling that the county, our taxpayers are gonna be the ones to pay for it. We talk about roads. I can't even walk down my road anymore, all right? It may not show up on any government site, but I can tell you, uh, with the development, we can't walk down it, okay? Once again, I know growth is coming. What I am gonna ask is, let's try to do it smartly. You know, it's funny, you talk about Monroe, we talk about Waxahachie, we don't talk about Mental Springs. All right? Mental Springs is the closest community to it. All right? And they want smart growth, okay? We, you know, we take a look at this, all the roads, roofs, where's that stormwater going? I know we got ponds, but there's also covered over there on E-F Rocky River. Is that gonna be big enough, or does taxpayers, we gotta pay for that too? What I'm gonna ask is, let them develop their plan. Come back with a full plan that makes sense, with all the dots and Ts crossed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next is Shannon Little.
Good evening, sir. Gentlemen. My name's Shannon Little. I live at thirty-five eleven South Rocky River Road. Been there, born there, raised all my life. Grandparents, mother and father, live within a quarter-mile of that, that address currently. I remember as a kid riding a bicycle up down Rocky River Road. I wouldn't dare put a kid on a bicycle on that road right now for nothing. We even had to have our mailbox moved from one side of the road to the other side of the road to safely get our own mail. So traffic in that area is not something that's as light as they think. I travel that road every day, going to Charlotte to work, and it is, it's just worse and worse. It seems like the farther you get towards seventy-four, where I think most of these people that are gonna live in that development are gonna be heading that direction. Uh, also, built my house there on my grandparents' land fifteen years ago. At that point, they had county water. So I do have a county water hookup. Every year, probably March or April, I get a letter or a phone call from the county. Conserve water. We don't have enough water. You can't water your lawn. Don't wash your car. Don't do this. Now you're gonna put three hundred more homes on that same feed coming down Rocky River Road? Seems a little excessive to me if you can't even accommodate the feed that you already have. That you're gonna put three more, hundred more houses on that same road. A little emotional about this. I don't know why, but it just bothers me that I don't mind development. I don't think that dense development is appropriate for the county. Single-family, it's a rural area. We grew up there, rural. We wanna keep it rural. We don't want Charlotte coming to Monroe. We wanna keep it rural. So I don't mind the development. I just don't think that density is appropriate for this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak at this time that did not sign up? Yes, sir. Go on up. Three minutes.
My name is Hayden McAtier, sixteen eighteen South Rocky River Road. I'm not gonna take all three minutes, but, uh, a testament to the traffic. Um, all of us get home, it's dark out this time of year. Uh, somebody's gotta get the mail. I refuse to let my mom get the mail because in that curve, um, you can't see anybody. You can't, if, if I'm walking to the mailbox and I look to my right, I see cornfields. I see Woodline hundreds of yards away. I have to listen for a car coming because my mama is not gonna get hit by some little kid that tries to test that curve. I have a flashlight in my hand so the people going from seventy-five know I'm coming. If somebody comes from Doster Road or Parkwood to seventy-five, it's too late for me, but I'm gonna leave a heck of a dent. So I can't imagine six hundred, eight hundred more cars going down that road. I'm gonna have to sprint to get our mail and sprint back. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to say something that hasn't had a chance? Yes, ma'am. Your name, please, and address.
I'm even Martin Helms, and I live at seventeen seventeen South Rocky River Road, which is directly across from that development. Uh, we've lived there for sixteen and a half years. And for several years, that curve was very dangerous and there was many wrecks in that curve, and the, the state did correct that curve. And we haven't had any wrecks since then, but traffic still comes around that curve very quickly, very fast. And it's still very dangerous, uh, for somebody pulling out. You know, you look one way, you've got a, you've got a little hump coming from the, from the left, and you, you've got the curve on the right if you're facing that development that you're talking about creating. So if you pull out and you look both ways, I mean, somebody's coming very quickly around that curve at any time. I've had them right behind me before I even knew and got all the way pulled out of my driveway before, so it's a dangerous place at this point already. So that's pretty much what I wanted to say.
Thank you for your time. Over here? Yes, go on up. State your name and your address, please.
Thank you. I'm DA Davis. My address is thirty-one fourteen Lawyers Road, Monroe. Um, in regards to the density, which seems to be a concern with everyone, we started out on this project at four hundred-plus units utilizing townhouses, patio homes, et cetera, which part of it was zoned for. We've now taken it to the second step, which was to utilize sixty and fifty-foot lots, give us about three hundred and nine homes. At the request of some of the folks, we realigned the project to take it down to two hundred and ninety-six homes. That all came basically from the Fire Marshal's requests. So now we've taken the project down to a density of five point, I'm sorry, two-point-five-six per acre, which is two hundred and ninety-six homes. Uh, we have completed all the studies out there. We, we, we are complying with DOT, the TIA studies, et cetera, et cetera. As far as the water capacity is there, the sanitary sewer, we're building the malls for the county now. Any cost incurred by that sanitary sewer, the extension, et cetera, would be paid for by the developer. Uh, there's a biggest reason we went with, we're trying to keep our density where it is. Uh, if we go from two-point-five-six to two-point-two, you lose about forty-five, fifty lots. We're gonna pay what we pay for that property irregardless. So if I put a hundred homes on that property, I'm gonna still pay for it. If I put two hundred homes on that property, I'm gonna pay the same amount. So we're trying to keep our price point somewhere between two-fifty and four-hundred thousand dollars for these houses so that the working people can be able to afford them. If you go from a two-hundred-and-fifty to a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, we shut the door on a lot of people. That's, that's our goal. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your efforts.
Appreciate it. Okay. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and close the public comments portion of this agenda and ask for discussion from the planning board. So does anyone on the board have any comments that they'd like to express at this time about this particular proposal? Jonathan?
There's a number of, of items here, a number of undecided factors, as a gentleman had mentioned. But the fact that sewer has not been addressed and it's still a wild card, to me, makes this a non-starter. My recommendation would be, before any other discussion is had, to table this and force them to come back with a plan regarding sewer. To add to that, obviously, uh, most residents in the county have been aware, water has been a very contentious issue with, uh, rate changes coming. What's not addressed in that at this point is additional sewer capacity, which will be additional cost. And I'm not talking about line extensions. I'm talking about treating the sewer, new plants that will be needed. And we certainly don't need to encourage growth that would further tax that system. So the fact that I've got a big question mark there and we're looking at additional costs to the county regardless, and just the sewer capacity makes this a non-starter at this time.
Okay. Appreciate your comments. Do we have any more comments? Louis?
Uh, yes, I have. Uh, I moved here, I moved to, uh, this area in nineteen seventy. Uh, and I lived in a very outskirts Charlotte when it was a little small town. And the city grew around me and it ran me out. In nineteen ninety-nine, I moved to Starlings. Uh, here's my shot in Union County. I moved my business to Union County as well. And, uh, okay, we, a little bit, about a year ago, it got so bad out there, I would leave, I would leave my development where I was living, and it would take me three or four traffic lights to, to make the fresh traffic light on Monroe Road. I have watched the traffic grow from Charlotte growing from a quarter, well, yeah, a quarter million people in Charlotte all the way going smack through, clean through Indian Trail up to the Rocky River Road areas, is, is, was my perception, where you had high, high density and everybody went back to work in, in, in Charlotte. Because I know I moved my business out here and I didn't know one neighbor who didn't go out and turn right down Monroe Road into Charlotte to go to work. I turned left to go to my little factory. Uh, anyway, and finally, I moved out here to, to Monroe figuring, hey, I'll, I'll die here. It'll never grow like this. But now we at, now where we're at, where we're at, at this, 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 uh, Rocky River Road, which is a line in my mind's eye that stops, that it stops here somewhere, is high, high density, is high, high traffic, and you can say all you want about there, they're gonna look for good jobs in Monroe, ain't gonna get, get, get jobs in Polton too, I'm sure, all three of them. But this is bedroom communities for, for Charlotte. And, and you, and the, the, you say, well, they're planning on doing roads. The, the, the road plans, I'll be, I'll be dead fifteen years before I have these roads done. They, they take forever to build a road in, so I would say you can't stop a man from making a living. You got property you wanna sell. I understand that, okay? We're all capitalists here, I think. But the density is just too high. It's just too many people in, in, in a square, in, in, in square footage. Uh, you're farmers, you gotta understand, you're gonna have city folk around here. You can't, you can't stop that, all right? No matter what you may wish. But, but I would tell you from a, from a city boy trying to be a country boy, you know, you, you, you know, in order to have a quality of life, you've gotta have a little bit lower density. Otherwise, you go, go, go live in New York City. Otherwise, you go, go, go live in New York City if you want that. And again, getting subway is going to do it for you want. I feel like the density in most of these developments is greater than it needs to be. Now, certainly, the more houses you build, the more profit you make. But the people around you have also gotta live. And, and, and I, I really believe that the density has gotta be reduced on this project and all subsequent projects because it's, it's getting hard to live out here, it truly is. And, and roads are not gonna be built in time to pick, to pick up this density. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Louis. Christopher, any comments?
I think I'm with, with Jonathan in terms of the septic and the lines. I, I mean, there's just too much ambiguity at this point. I would love to have some of those questions answered and get some definitive feedback in terms of not only that, but also your guys' plan with regards to the, the cross-sections of the roads, whichever way you decide to go, you know, it's, it's tough. You know, we're all part of the problem, right? Except for the other folks that have been here for a hundred and fifty years. And if you're in this room, congratulations. But, you know, for us that have relocated and were transients to the area, we all love and live in Union County, take advantages of the good. And unfortunately, we have to accept some of the bad, right? Because as much as we would love to tell you that we can reduce the density on these things and get them into a more feasible fashion, we're still moving to the area. So I myself am a contributing factor to the frustration. I just would love to see a bit more conclusive findings on a few of these items before we even give a recommendation, one way or the other.
Okay. Thank you, Christopher. Patrick?
I concur with both gentlemen at the other end that sewer is a, is a big factor.
Okay. Thank you. Charlie?
Well, I'm one of the ones that actually lived here all my life, so, and I have driven that road and I have turned, I've been on that curve. And so the northern entrance to that, to that subdivision concerns me because I know what they're talking about.
Okay.
I think it's a little premature, maybe not, maybe it shouldn't be coming here. I think if they're going to go back and, and massage it a little bit, which I suspect they probably would, I would get us a little bit more happy with the site distance on that northern entrance. I believe, I myself believe that streets need to accommodate on-street parking because HOAs, I consider to be toothless tigers. There's no way for an HOA to, to be able to police anything. And I believe that the majority of these residents are gonna be people traveling to Charlotte. So we need to concern ourselves with the routes that would be taken from this subdivision heading in that direction and coming back from that direction. So I just think it's, it's a shock to the system with this, this much density.
Okay. Thank you. Robert?
I think there's a lot of, I agree, there's a lot of variables. The sewer system is one of them, the street widths are another one. I, I don't see how you change that and, and not change the aprons or change the lots in some way. And as far as the density goes, as you said, we're all capitalists here. We're trying to squeeze the most out of an orange, and so that's the goal. I understand that. However, we have to take other things into consideration. Even though we may not have complete control over the, the roadways or the utilities in the way that they work, we still have to take those into consideration. And I just think that, I agree that we should probably table this to come back with a definitive plan of what we're gonna do here as far as the road widths, how's the sewer capacity look, what's gonna be done with that before we can even make a decision about it.
Okay. Russell, you have any comments?
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, with all the comments that have been made by the board, I would like to call for one of three things. We can have a motion to approve, we can have a motion to disapprove, and based on what came from Jonathan down here, we can table with stipulations. So with that, before I call for a vote and the motion to be made, is there any more board discussion?
I have a question for Mr. Jensen.
Pardon?
I have a question for Mr. Jensen. Should this be tabled? Is there a timeframe that it would have to come back to the board or it would automatically be approved, denied, or not brought to the board again?
Once the board hears a case, they got forty-five days to, to make a decision, unless the applicant chooses to, to extend that. If no recommendation, so, so that really kinda gives you two months because you wanna hear it today, in forty-five days from now, you'll have another meeting in between that. If no, if no recommendation is rendered within that forty-five-day period, then the applicant could basically choose to come back or they could go to the planning board without a recommendation from the plan, from the, they go to the Board of Commissioners without a recommendation from the planning board. I think we've had that happen a couple of times. I think only once an applicant has chosen to go to the Commissioners without a recommendation. That's generally not advisable.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I would call for one of the three, a motion to approve, a motion to disapprove, or table with stipulations. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'm willing to table with a stipulation of being called in, it's called at the next meeting.
Okay.
Second?
We have a second? Charlie? Thank you. You got that?
I did. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So that, it'll be tabled with the stipulations to have the sewer issue resolved, among other things we discussed tonight, and you will cover that with applicant.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, call for a vote. Holes in favor of the motion that was made to table? Raise your right hand. Disapprove? Like sign. Okay. Did you get the vote?
I did. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, we, we approve the tabling of it and we thank everybody for being here tonight, for taking your time and being very kind in your comments, the length of time you took to make your comments, and being very, very civil. You don't know how much we appreciate that. Because we've had times when it's got pretty raunchy. So you guys are to be committed and we thank you from the bottom of our heart. So safe travels back to your residency, okay? Have a good night. Okay, continuing on with the agenda. What did I do with it? Stafford Ford?
Yes, sir.
Just a minute.
So I wanted to, as you all-
Just, just a minute. Folks, if y'all have any comments, would y'all step outside, please, so we can continue the meeting? Thank you. Okay.
So as you all know, we've been updating the board about the progression of the Union County Comprehensive Plan. I know a few of you are on some of our subcommittees. So you guys are well aware of what's going on. I wanted to bring back a quick update about where we are in the process. Of course, it's the month of February and we are well in our visioning process. A couple of you that are on boards have been through the first part of that process and you're gonna get some, some feedback and follow-up that we took to the coordinating committee in, in your February meetings. I think some groups have had their February meetings already, some have not. We are well into our visioning process to come up with the vision, overall vision for the county, which will help guide the overall scenario planning and some of the goals and objectives ultimately that come out of that. So moving forward, we will continue that visioning throughout March. Take those, have three community meetings throughout the county. Once the coordinating committee, we're gonna take that visioning back to them at the end of February. Once they sort of say grace over that, that overall vision, then we'll take that out to the public. We want the public to weigh in on that to make sure that the work that the subcommittees and the coordinating committee is, is doing is what the public sees and, and wants as far as a, an overall vision for the county. Just today, I'm, I'm pretty sure these, these are nailed down. We have three community meetings and I think those are gonna be, we don't have the dates yet, but those are gonna be in Mineral Springs, Indian Trail, and then here in Monroe. So we're gonna try to spread them out in different areas of the county. I think the Mineral Springs Volunteer Fire Department, the Indian Trail Town Hall, and here in Monroe at the Agricultural Center. So again, try to get feedback from the public. After that visioning process is over and an ultimate vision for what Union County should be is, is, is established, then we're gonna go into our scenario planning process. And that's where we take that vision and plug it into some different scenarios. Because even though you have an overall vision, there's still different scenarios that could come out of that. So we wanna, we use some, some ArcGIS software that can help us scenario plan. Those scenarios will end up going back to the subcommittees and the committees. A preferred scenario, preferred alternative will be picked by the coordinating committee. Again, we'll take that back out to the public to make sure, kind of a, a speed bump almost, if you will, to make sure that the work we're doing is what the public wants to see. Once that scenario is selected by the public and, and the, and the coordinating committee, we will get into the plan development, which is where we come up with goals and objectives to help implement that, that preferred scenario. That, that's where we come up with things like possible targeted rezonings, text amendments to the ordinance, working with economic development to do great things, to bring jobs to the county. Lot of different things that, that goes into those goals and objectives. Once that's done, again, you see another community meeting. So we go out to the public again to make sure that these, just, this is sort of a final check to make sure vision's right, scenario's right, and you think these goals and objectives are good. And then ultimately, the coordinating committee will approve that, make a recommendation to the planning board. The planning board will look at that, make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And then ultimately, the county commissioners will adopt a comprehensive plan for Union County. We hope to be done at the end of December. I don't think it'll be done before that, but it could be in, into twenty twenty-one. But we are, right now, we are, are pretty well on track. Again, what's going on at the subcommittees, some of you are on those subcommittees. We've had an organizing meeting where it was really just selecting a chair and vice chair, deciding what kind of public comment periods we're gonna have, things like that. And then, right now, we're, we're kind of in developing a vision statement and information gathering. And those will continue throughout, the, the visioning won't, but the information gathering will really continue throughout the process. And that's really, the, the committees kind of tell the staff who they want to hear from as part of this process. And so far, we've had some folks come from economic development that have talked to a couple, a couple of boards. I know they spoke with the, the Business Subcommittee. And we had a representative from Economic Development come to the Agricultural Committee specifically to talk about agriculture in Union County. Union County Public Works has spoken to a couple of committees, and in fact, they're coming. We had, we had a change-up on the Ag Committee. They're actually gonna come speak Friday. I know it was supposed to be DOT, but we had a cancellation. Environmental Health has come to talk about water and, and, and septic systems to a few committees. Stormwater, Transportation, Parks and Rec, and Emergency Services have all come and spoken to various committees. And most of these are, are gonna be general, kind of making the rounds. I think a lot of the committees wanted to hear the same, the same types of information. So if you haven't heard from these guys yet, you probably will. And again, I talked a little bit about developing the vision statement. We've been going through that process. What is it? And I like this quote that Bjorn put in here, this last sentence. "The vision is like a captain as they steer the ship." So it, that, that vision statement guides you through the entire process of developing this plan. So, so what do we hear from the subcommittees with the visioning process? A, a lot of, we presented three different models to, to the board. The Tallahassee model was really a kind of, and, and if you're on the board, you know what I'm talking about when I say the Tallahassee model. It's a short opening statement about what the, the vision is and then some bulleted items that really kinda drive home what that vision means. There were some other vision statements that were really long. There was a couple, there was one that was really short. But, but every single board picked the Tallahassee model. We went through a visioning process with each subcommittee where we filled out little sticky notes about what they thought the perfect Union County was and some, some key thoughts and, and, and words were. We got over two hundred specific pieces of input into that. We took those and divided them into some overarching categories because a lot of them fit into, into, into various categories. And you can see some of those categories were environment, community, economic development, transportation, were some of the things that we heard often. A couple of notes, all the environment, all the environmental comments were made by the Environment Subcommittee. Safety utilities and, believe it or not, agriculture were the least mentioned. And all the agricultural comments were made by the Agriculture Subcommittee. But that kinda makes sense because they're the ones that are involved in it and wanna see it protected in Union County. What, what do we hear from February? We changed a few things. We had a strengths and weaknesses section. We kind of went back on that a little bit based on some comments that we heard. There, there's gonna be a survey going out. We didn't wanna put out what we felt some of the strengths and weaknesses were because we didn't want that to taint the process because those were, those were our thoughts and not necessarily the public's thoughts. Some of the committees did point out that it helped, that some of those strengths and weaknesses kinda helped them go through and decide what some of those, what some of the things they liked and disliked about it. And some folks actually said, well, some of the weaknesses may be strengths to, to us, but, but they liked the fact that, that, that those bullets were in there. So they decided that maybe they should be, instead of strengths and weaknesses, let's call them all observations and put them out there for people to see and let them make up their minds about whether they think that's a strength or weakness. Four visions were presented, are gonna be presented to the public and, and the, the subcommittees. And they've all, subcommittees have seen these and I'm about to show them to you. Those are supporting municipalities. That language got changed a little bit. This is the current language that, that, that you're gonna see. Infrastructure, market-driven, and interconnected. Interconnected is changed, gonna be changed to cooperative. And I'll kinda go through these really quickly. Again, these are the four. We have some, some assumptions that, that we made for each scenario. These are just some underlying assumptions. Union County Public Schools is not gonna quit educating students and they're, they're still gonna do a great job at it. So that, that was an overall assumption. Union County Schools is not all of a sudden gonna say, well, we're just gonna be a bad school system. Still gonna be a great school system. We, the county will still be involved in the transportation planning process, whether opinions of it are good or bad. We're still gonna have a seat at the table. We're still gonna, DOT's still gonna maintain streets and plan for road widenings and, and, and things like that. We're still gonna have a representative at, at the CARPO meetings and RPO meetings. And we'll continue to participate in, in project prioritization. Union County's not going to say they don't support the agricultural industry. So that's another assumption. We, we assumed that, that the county would still support agriculture. The, the fourth one is probably one of those that's, that's a little divisive in, in some areas. Based on all the models that, that we see, about forty-seven thousand people per decade want to come to Union County. And that's what we've been experiencing. That's what the models continue to show. In North Carolina, it's, it's really hard to say you, you, you have to shut growth down. down. You can't really do that. You can change densities, you can change the patterns on where people live, you can, you can increase densities in some areas, you can decrease in other areas, but as long as a market is there, you can't stop people from moving here. You can't stop subdivision growth. If you have an RA40 subdivision and a developer wants to build that, they can build it and people can move in. And we're going to talk a little bit about that on some of the, some of our observations. So, so the first, the first statement is supporting municipalities. And I'll let you kind of read through that really quickly. I don't want to keep you forever, so I hope you can read while I talk. Really, the core of this is to respect municipal plans. So, if, if a municipality has a plan for, for something, whether that's a low-density plan or whether they want growth, this vision would support that, that, that idea. Again, here you have vibrant municipal cores. That's one of the things that goes back to what we heard at our Landry's Retreat when, to kick off this process back in August. I know you've heard me talk about that retreat before. I think a few of you were probably there. We, we heard that a lot from the towns. They wanted municipal cores. Clearly designated, commercial unemployment is also none of this stripped-out development. Let's clearly say this is where we want commercial growth to occur. A range of housing types, not, not every municipality wants that, but some said they did. Some, some municipalities said, we want to have apartments, we want to have town halls, but they want to plan it. They don't want it just to be everywhere, spread out. And protect rural and agricultural character. So, then the areas that aren't necessarily in some of those areas that, that want growth to protect the rural landscapes and protect the, the rural and agricultural character of the, of, of that particular neighborhood or, or area of the county. Some of the observations, this does support municipalities. It may require extending water or sewer service to some of these targeted growth areas, and that's not saying the county's going to pay for it. That's a, ultimately, right now, water extensions are usually, and sewer extensions are a lot of times paid for by the developers when there's already a line in place. But just from a planning standpoint, you may, there may have to be areas where water lines or sewer lines are upsized, or places that aren't served now that has to be extended to. It may require, in some cases, a concerted effort by some of the municipalities to, to guide growth. I think most of the towns are doing a pretty good job of, of managing their growth. Some could probably do a little bit better. So, it may have required a little bit more concerted effort on some of their parts. And then, this, this idea that, you know, we, we talk about RA40 a lot, and, and that's our rural zoning, but a reliance on that may not necessarily result in agricultural protection. Because there's this idea that with this, with this vision, that we're going to protect rural landscapes and agricultural areas, but if a market's there for a developer to build in an RA40 area, even on well and septic, if the soil perks and he can get a well on the site, he can build on it. And there are areas where that can happen on an acre and a half or two acres of, of property, and that's not necessarily preserving the agricultural or rural landscape. That still looks like a subdivision, and it still generates traffic, and it still generates kids. So, it's just something to think about when we were putting these together. Again, going back to the vibrant cores, opportunity to improve downtowns, reduce growth in rural areas, the municipal's ability to have their own goals and visions and to implement those. It may result in some less commercial unemployment if those municipal plans don't support it, and it could increase traffic impacts if the growth patterns run counter to the transportation network improvement. So, if we have growth in areas where we don't have planned improvements in the transportation network, that's kind of, that's kind of what that means. So, this is the municipal vision that was submitted to the different subcommittees. So far, we've had some of these changes that, that we've incorporated. Some of you guys haven't seen it. I know Ag's going to see this on, on Friday, so you can get a preview. The next one is infrastructure vision. So, this is really a place defined by where services are, are present, so where water and sewer is currently located, where the transportation network can handle this growth, and, and an idea of, of those are areas where capacity could easily be expanded and accommodate future growth. Some of the observations on this, I won't, again, I don't want to take a lot of time. I won't, I won't spend a whole lot of time, but it's, it's an efficient way to do it, because if there's already water and sewer there, it's efficient. It, it will probably reduce development of some of those rural areas, again, because we're not, we're not extending, and under this vision, not extending water and sewer lines out everywhere. It may blur the lines between municipalities in the western part of the county. So, as opposed to the municipal-supported, where municipal, municipalities kind of set their own vision for, for what they want, this will kind of blur those lines. So, if there's, if, if there's infrastructure there, you could develop there. It would not support extensions of utilities for prospective development. You would better be able to control the location of high-density growth. You'd have really clear priorities on where, what road widening projects are, because you know where the infrastructure is and you know where that growth would occur. However, it may conflict with some of the municipal visions and citizen sentiments about growth. So, you have a lot of areas where there are utilities, but the overarching idea is to not have a lot of growth in those areas. So, this would conflict a little bit with that. If you have growth in areas where the transportation network is failing, it would require local funds to help bring those roads up to capacity in an adequate timeframe. And it would require denying developments that don't meet this criteria. So, if you don't have infrastructure, it would require saying no, and to say, we're not extending water and sewer to it, we're not approving a rezoning. And that's not just the county, that's, that's the towns as well. So, that's our infrastructure vision. The market-driven vision is basically what it sounds like. It's going to let the market dictate where growth occurs. So, you can see, again, we've got some strike-throughs. These are changes. I didn't want to hide anything from you, so these are some comments that we've heard from the different subcommittees, so we've had some strikeouts. So, this really relies, again, on where the market says this needs to happen. So, increased housing options in areas where people want to live, a market-driven range of land uses. You can have a lot of different mixes of things. A convenient accessibility between retail, residential, and employment. Possibility of increased employment opportunities, and a more streamlined development approval process. It would reflect market demands for housing type and locations. It's an opportunity to have cooperative partnerships with development to help try to address some of our infrastructure issues. It's got the, it may impact an excessive number of roads, so it's got a good possibility that, you know, if, if it's a market-driven approach and development can happen where it wants to happen, you, you could potentially have spread-out development that impacts roads, or you could have high-density areas where roads are already under-functioning. Does not achieve coordination goals of, of the input we got during our visioning process. So, we, we did get a few comments about, almost like a laissez-faire approach to, to, to planning. We didn't get many, but we got a few. That's why this one's in here. We didn't want to leave it out. But it, it wouldn't achieve the goals of, of what we heard the most during our visioning exercises. Increased potential for landowners to sell land will possibly result in more sprawling development patterns in the rural areas. So, again, you don't get the rural protection. May undermine municipal plans and increase conflict with the county. So, that's the idea, that the, the municipalities and the counties would come into more conflict with each other. And it would require resisting NIMBY pressure to deny new development if it's proposed. Again, this would be a laissez-faire approach to planning, where if the market wants it, the market gets it. And then, this was originally called interconnected. Based on some good feedback we got from the Citizens Committee, we changed this to, to cooperative. So, this is the idea of, of, of everybody working together to achieve some common, some common goals. So, some of the strengths of, or not some of the strengths, but some of the things that you can expect if, if this is what's chosen. Multimodal connections between activity nodes, so not necessarily the reliance on just a car to, to get around. And I'm not talking about light rail. I'm talking about trails and, and things like that, bike lanes, to, to help people make short trips between places. Retail and employment options in designated areas throughout the county. A better, a, a better capacity to address stormwater and other multi-jurisdictional issues such as traffic. Again, these things, a lot of these things cross jurisdictional lines. So, just because a subdivision's built on parcel A doesn't mean that that stormwater stops at, at that property line. If there's another municipality next door, I mean, it keeps going. It keeps going into the stream. Same thing with traffic. Traffic doesn't stop at the, at the municipal jurisdiction or the county jurisdiction. I, I think as, as, as we've talked about before, a lot of people work in Mecklenburg County. They're either driving uptown, South Park, Ballantyne. Those are the three big office areas, and people, no matter where they live in Union County, tend to flow into one of those major arterials. And I'm sure you see it, if you drive that way, you get, you get caught in it. But this would, would help us by strengthening, strengthening our ability to work together across these jurisdictional lines. This would help us have an increased capacity to address them. Not that we'll fully address everything, but this would help. Preserved in well-defined rural areas, so development occurs where the, the people want it, but it doesn't occur where people don't want it. Aesthetics along corridors, so if you're driving along Highway 84, you're going to get a general feel, because the towns are going to work together to come up with, with ideas on what those corridors should be like. Enhanced community connections for arts, agriculture, and, and recreation, and an increased opportunity for community events and initiatives. Again, the idea of working together to, to have a lot of these things that, that we heard through some of these committee comments. Some of the observations that, that we had along with some of the committee members were, it does meet our vision, some of the input we got for coordinating our efforts, and we heard that a lot from, from our committees. An increased capacity to collectively meet challenges. And I talked about that a little bit before, such as stormwater traffic against trail networks like the Carolina Thread Trail, the Union County Greenway Master Plan, to help us build some of those things. Again, that flows right into the next one of increased recreational opportunities. It may require increased taxes to help pay for some of those programs and initiatives. There would be, again, with, with the trail network, you would have transportation alternatives in urbanizing areas. You've got some areas that, that want to grow, and if they want to grow and we work together to get some of these alternatives in, it could, it could create alternatives to driving in limit, in some limited fashion. If you do that, you can possibly shorten your average trip length. It requires cooperation and blending of, of multiple local governments' visions, so while each municipality could have their own, you kind of have to work together in some of those areas of, of overlap is, is kind of what, what I call them sometimes, like doughnut holes, fringe areas. And then, it requires us to sustain commitment. So, this is not something that, this vision, and, and really, none of these visions are something that happened overnight, but this one especially, because you've got some targeted investments that would need to be made to make this achievable. You, you would have not just adopted, but this has to be over a number of years, probably long after I'm gone. Maybe Emma will still be here, but this would take a coordinated effort, long period of time. Again, those are the visions that have been presented. Not one is settled on. Most of the coordinating, or most of the subcommittees have seen this. There's a couple that will be seeing this in a couple of days. Again, this is kind of where we are right now. Like I said, ultimately, a vision will be chosen, take it out to the public, make sure we're, we're still on the right track. We don't hear something completely different from the public. Does anyone have any questions right now about the process or where we are or what we've been talking about?
Lee, is it possible to get this PowerPoint sent to each of us?
Yes, we will send it.
We will. It's pretty fast.
Yes, I will send it out to each one of you, and if you're interested to see what the committees are doing, there, there might be a slight delay in some of that information being uploaded to the website, but we are trying to get all of the, the minutes, agendas, and if there was any PowerPoint presentations made to the subcommittees, we're trying to get that onto, we have a, a Union County 2050 Conference of Plan page, and we're trying to get all those items out there under each respective subcommittee. So, you can see, and, and the public can see what is being presented to the subcommittees and what the subcommittees are, are talking about, because we don't want to, this is not something that needs to be done in the dark. This is something that should have a lot of public input, and that's what we want.
Okay, thank you.
And before I go, I'm not sure if Emma was at our last meeting. Emma is a new employee. She started on January the 6th. We, we did, we got approval in the budget for, for this current year for a new plan or position, and Emma was the, was the chosen applicant.
Congratulations.
So far, she's doing a great job. And in case you didn't know, Mr. Black is not here. Mr. Black retired. So, his last day was January 31st. I think most of you got an email. I think we had a couple of little get-togethers for him. So, I know he, he kind of hated that we didn't have a meeting last month, because he wanted to kind of come say bye. I told him he could come back anytime, but anyway.
Do you want to discuss this reimbursement form?
Yes. So, you'll, you'll see on your, on your, actually, I've got most of them. Come see me before you leave. I have two reimbursement forms. There's a little bit of, of confusion over which one Finance wants us to turn in. So, instead of trying to figure that out last minute, I just printed both of them off, and if you'll sign both of them, we, we can actually, we know what your travel times are to and from, so we know the mileage. If you'll just sign it, we'll fill that in, and we'll get the right one submitted to Finance. So, we don't have to worry about calling you and bugging you about, you know, coming, coming by and filling this out. Also, a few of you have a form on your desk. Not everybody does, but I know there's a few members who have chosen not to take pay or, or get reimbursed for travel. They've asked that we get an official kind of acknowledgement that you don't want that. We've never, we've never done that before, but that's something that we've been asked to kind of provide. So, I, I, I know the members that didn't want it, so I went ahead and printed those forms out. If you guys don't mind signing those, then we'll get Pam and myself to sign them and get that taken care of for you.
Okay. Any other comments from Lee?
Let's go home and hear the president speak, y'all.
Motion has been made.
Dismissed.
To adjourn.
Adjourn.
Please have a second.
No, I had a comment.
Okay.
If, if y'all be so kind. I've noticed that this, we start off with a call to order, and I remember, right behind us, we have an American flag and a state flag, and I remember public meetings always started off with the Pledge of Allegiance filed by invocation. And I see that's a couple of reasons. Number one, I'm a veteran. I believe in, in slaying the flag, without a doubt. And as far as invocation goes, you know, I, I'm not a particularly religious guy, but certainly I would like God's guidance in making sure I do the right thing. Additionally, especially from your point, now, you're like, I noticed that you, you laid on the law on these things, because we were here for that one clown who was getting a little goofy on us. When you have a little more decorum, you get a lot less of that kind of foolishness. But I would certainly ask us, this board, to consider, you know, standing up, saying, face the flag, and, and even if you find somebody, find some little kid here, you ask him to, you know, if you do the honor of leading us in a, in a pledge. All those things are good, you know, make us all look good. It's a good deal, and the same thing for the invocation.
What are the rest of the boards doing, like the Board of Adjustment?
The Board of Adjustment does not currently do that, but it, it would be up to each individual board. If you guys wanted to do that, that wouldn't be a huge issue for us to add that to the agenda.
Do you all want to start that?
I would like to see that, yes, sir.
Down this way, you want to start it? I don't have a problem.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, then let's put, put it on the agenda next time to pledge allegiance. Then we'll ask for a moment of silence, not knowing, like we had somebody here tonight that was... that was not, was of the Muslim faith, we wouldn't, okay? So we'll just have a moment of silence, okay? We'll ask for that, is that okay?
I, you know, I don't know, God, God is God. Whether you call him Allah, whether you call, you call him Buddha, or, or what. But yeah, if you need a moment of silence to, 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 to seek God's from our Creator, and it was still making a prayer as opposed to, a moment of silence is, is kind of silly, I think.
Well, the town of Wexel does that, and it works out really well. That's the reason I made the recommendation.
Canned words there. Canned silence is not a bad thing.
Yeah.
No, but it's not against, it, it, it's, yeah. All right.
Under the political correctness of America.
I'll shut up, all right?
It's up to the individual what they want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Welcome. Lee, thank you for your first night. Okay? And here's the speakers right up here.
Okay, thank you.
For your notes. Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Oh, I'm sorry. You have one?
I've already got one.